And I rise to also support this legislation that I believe finds the balance between accountability and compassion for these times. While we talk about a Blake fix, the human suffering due to substance abuse has been a generational issue. Blake was the pinnacle, maybe the alarm bell that woke up this body and the body across the rotunda, that something needed to be done. Something that we have recognized year after year in our communities, on our streets, and even sometimes in our homes. Today, we talk about a policy that I think looks both backwards and forwards. It's looking backwards from where we were, and as a good gentleman just said, some of the failed policies of the past, but also the failed policies to adequately invest in our workforce for mental health treatment and drug abuse treatment, our infrastructure to make sure those needing treatment have a place to go. And this policy, I believe, strikes a balance that would create a system that helps hold accountable those who are preying and hurting our community members, but at the same time provides an opportunity for those struggling from addiction, but wanting something better for their lives. We know that in our communities, drug abuse and addiction have caused rises in crime, have caused rises in homelessness, and have perpetuated intergenerational poverty in so many families in our communities. Although there's a lot of work ahead of us to build the infrastructure, to build the workforce for this policy, the bill before us does create a gross misdemeanor that will help hold those accountable who are repeat offenders, who are hurting community members in the most marginalized in our communities, but also create off-ramps for those wanting and needing treatment. It recognizes the need for local input and respect for local values. And I believe it provides prosecuting attorneys, law enforcement, and the justice system the flexibility to fashion remedies for a very complex issue and maintain the current successful options that we have. In my community, that's drug court, which is very successful. I'm urging a yes today. I believe the policy is a better policy to be uniform across the state, it better addresses the needs of our communities than the previous policies that we've discussed and debated on the House floor. I also believe it's better policy than doing nothing. And I want to thank the members from both sides of the aisle here in this body, as well as the members on the other side of the rotunda. I often joke and say, the only person I agree with 100% of the time is myself, and even then, there's some wicked debates within my own head on whether I'm doing the right or wrong thing. I don't believe any policy necessarily is perfect, but I do think that there's enough flexibility that our communities can fashion remedies, our court system and our treatment providers can fashion remedies that address the needs of our local community. And although we're passing the policy today, the work really begins today, to make sure this is implemented in a way that is successful, and that we measure that success by the people that we lift out of poverty, lift out of addiction, and help get them on a path for success. So with that, I'm urging a yes vote.
I just want to first start out by saying I am so grateful for all of the members that came together to work on a solution, and you know, with the full understanding that neither side is 100% happy with the result. Madam Speaker, what I would like to point out, though, is during those deliberations and people working together, one of the things that I think is an important pillar of this conversation, I think, was probably absent. It certainly has been so far from conversation that I've heard. Madam Speaker, that's the innocent victims that are being hurt or being killed, either indirectly or directly, as a result of good people with substance abuse problems that are not getting the help that they need. Madam Speaker, I'm going to talk to you today about Avril. Avril was a one-year-old, sweet little girl. Avril's no longer with us because her mother was suffering with substance abuse. The grandmother tried helping her, but the mother refused help. And now Avril has been stolen from her grandmother. Her life has been stolen. Her siblings' lives are forever changed. Madam Speaker, I am rising also to represent the many families in Spokane, in which I hail from, who sadly are losing their family members daily, permanently. They're not coming back, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, please look at me. Please. It does not matter. This drug doesn't care what somebody's age, or gender, or their skin color is. It doesn't ask. And neither do the cartels, neither do the gangs, neither do the traffickers that are bringing this poison to our state and preying on our families for profit. Madam Speaker, our children are watching. They're watching to see what happens. And when they see confusion, and they see in some cases it's okay to do this, and we use the word "safe consumption," Madam Speaker, there is no safe consumption. Somebody that has substance abuse and is not willing to get the help, it's a slow death. And it is a death for the families that love them, that are watching them suffer, because their hands are also tied, as parents, when it comes to either mental health care or substance abuse, trying to help those children, when our law says, "No, parents, you don't have the right to intervene and do what you feel is best for your child." And Madam Speaker, I come from that, from experience. I have a son that struggled with this. And as easy as it would have been, you know, for us not to want to see our son fall flat on his face and fail, so we would do everything we can to make that not happen. Madam Speaker, we were the younger of the group of many of families in which we saw the parents do that. They stepped up trying to stop their child from failing. The child didn't get the help that they needed, and their children are dead, Madam Speaker. I'm happy to tell you today that my child is alive. He's alive because he was told, "Son, you weren't raised that way. We love you, we want for you to help you, but you know it is not okay for you to live your life." He has three kids now that he has adopted, and those three kids came from another father struggling with substance abuse. Madam Speaker, I care about this issue. I care, and I did think about voting no for this. Why? Because I don't think that it addresses the crime victims that we must address. There are too many people dying, either from the addiction, getting accidentally exposed to it on our highways. We have to do better, Madam Speaker. I'm going to vote for this today. I'm going to vote for this today out of hope. Out of hope that we will come back together and we will continue looking at the really tough issues. And Madam Speaker, I'm praying that there is something that happens where we can take the Avrils and the other children and the adult children that these families no longer have, and we start putting them number one, and we go after the drug cartels, the gangs, and the traffickers that are stealing our family members from us, that are peddling this poison for profit. Madam Speaker, that's the message that we need to be putting out there, that it won't be tolerated, as we continue to work to get the ones that need help, the help that they need. I've supported those bills. I will continue to support those bills. And I thank you, Madam Speaker, for everything that you've done. I know you care, too. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yesterday, after we caucused, and then the bill became public and we could read it, I immediately printed it out. And I came over here yesterday with carpooling with a member of the other body, and I read the bill and talked about it, and just kind of get into it because these things interest me. And again, today, when I came over early this morning, and I went through the bill again, and I also talked, made some phone calls with some folks. I kind of get my head wrapped around this. And something that I've talked about a lot is, when you get into recovery, is consequences. If you want somebody to get into recovery from addiction, there needs to be consequences, accountability. It just isn't going to happen. You don't wake up on Thursday morning and say, "I've had enough, I'm going to quit that," because it owns you. That drug, that alcohol, that addiction, it owns you, and you're powerless. As a matter of fact, that's about the first step of recovery, is admitting that you're powerless, that you need help to move on. And you've heard me say this many times on the floor, and I'll say it again. Today's the 16th day of May, and on the 25th day of May, I will be clean and sober 36 years. So I know what it takes. I know what it takes to get there. And not only I know that, I know what it takes to stay here. There's a lot of good things in the bill that I read, and I'm glad to see that we moved it up to a gross misdemeanor. I'd prefer to see it go a little farther, but this is a good. We have some diversions in there, some opportunities for people to find a way through their life, to find a way, find their life. But some things that I struggled with a little bit, there's just some definitions I don't understand, like treatment. Treatment could mean many things. We need to define what that is, so we know where we want people to go. Providers. What is a provider? Provider, someone who offers an opportunity to find sobriety, to find, to get out of the drug addiction? We need to define that. Are they going to be, are they going to be credentialed by the state of Washington or not? If they're not, we're going to open the door to unethical folks that can take advantage of people trying to get out of what they're in? That concerns me. It concerns me that we're not committing to the current treatment system that we have out there. And is it perfect? No, it is not. It's not perfect. Well, I'm going to tell you what, 36 years ago in nine days, I thought it was pretty darn perfect. And there are people that are really trying hard to help folks get there. The bill talks about a lot of people that can help you get into recovery, recovery navigators. I think this is good stuff, except I don't know what they are. I don't know who's managing this system. The one that I found really interesting, and I'd like to have permission to read from the bill if I could, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It talks about law enforcement diversion programs, law enforcement assisted diversion implementation experts. Oh, wow, that was a mouthful for me. So I got into the bill, and it talks about it. And what they can provide is long-care case management, or long-term case management, facilitation and coordination on overdose prevention, facilitation and coordination on the prevention of infectious disease transmission, facilitation and coordination with physical and behavioral health services, facilitation and coordination of substance use disorders. That's good stuff. That's positive stuff. I'm really, I was really glad to see that in there. But it doesn't tell me how we're going to get there, how we're going to train these folks, how we're going to make that happen. And I think that's really important that we think about as we go forward, and we come back here next year, that we think about. Let's see where they're at. How can we help them go there? It talks in the bill a lot about assessments. Doesn't say who's going to do that or how that's going to happen. Is it going to be a professional, someone who's dealt with this, who's been trained to deal with this? Or somebody like me, who's lived it and just going to assess people? Here's another part in here that concerned me some, was, I'd like to read the bill again if I might, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
The authority, and actually, I'm not quite sure who that is, but in the bill, it says, "The authority, in consultation with the Department of Children, Youth, and Families, shall develop a training for parents of adolescents and transition-age youth with substance use disorders." Oh, I like the sound of that, I really do. And it goes on to say, this is some of the training you're going to do. Science and education related to substance use disorders, adaptive and functional communication strategies with a loved one about their substance use disorder, self-care and means of obtaining support, means to obtain opioid overdose reversal medication, and suicide prevention. And then, "The authority and the Department of Children, Youth, and Families shall make this training publicly available, and the Department of Children, Youth, and Families must promote the training to licensed foster parents and caregivers." And that really speaks to me as a former foster parent. But it doesn't say who's going to do it, and how we're going to develop that program. And if we don't develop the right programs, we take people the wrong way. And that concerns me. And I think it should concern all of us. And how do we find that? I think we sit down, when we come back here next year, we see where we're at and how we can make this stronger. I have lost friends to addictions. My wife and I lost a nephew prior to his 40th birthday, to addictions. I've seen neighbors, couldn't stop them, no matter how many times I stopped by and talked, they didn't care. And they died. It's an insidious disease, and it doesn't care who it takes, and nobody is immune to it. But there's something it doesn't say that really speaks to me in this bill. It doesn't say anything about abstinence. You're not going to recover without abstinence. It's not going to happen. These drugs, they're all, affect the central nervous system. And when you're addicted, they own you. You can say whatever you want, "I can handle this, I can do this," they own you. That drug, that drink, whatever it is, owns you. And it affects your mind, it affects what you do, it affects how you are, everything about you. And to find recovery and to get your life back, you have to quit. You have to find abstinence. And most of the time, I would say, 90% plus of the time, you're going to quit because there was a consequence that finally woke you up, and you didn't want to go there. Consequences. It happened to me. Today, I will vote yes for this bill, but I'm going to watch it close. It's not an enthusiastic yes. It's like we've kidded around here once in a while, there's not an other button on our little machine here. I might push other, but I don't want to vote no, because we need something, and this is a start. And I'm looking forward to coming back next year, and maybe we can go a little bit further. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, it's always interesting, standing on this floor, coming up with thoughts and ideas about speaking on various policies that we debate. And today, it is even more evident to me, and I think to many of the members, how diverse this body is, and how much lived experience many of us bring to this body, and when we face difficult decisions and difficult choices like we do today, how that plays out. Madam Speaker, I prepared a lot of notes. I was thinking about different things, and why this bill is so important. You know, Madam Speaker, this year, on this floor, we heard the word "crisis" used more than I think I've ever heard it. I swore I would not use it again. I didn't want to hear it. We talked about it in housing, and transpo, and law enforcement, all those different things. But you know, Madam Speaker, we did so much good work in the session that just ended a few short weeks ago. So much good work. And I think we're doing that again today, Madam Speaker. Because, Madam Speaker, I can say the word "crisis" because this truly is the single biggest crisis our state faces today, the opioid epidemic. There is not one corner of this state, not one city, not one town, not one county, that is not affected by this. And you've heard, Madam Speaker, many people talk about the residual effects, the direct effect to the individual, the side effects, the crime that goes with it, all the different things. But Madam Speaker, what we're doing today is we're putting forth a policy that is going to address this. We have to. We had to a couple of years ago when we did the original Blake fix because of the Supreme Court decision. And that was a tough decision. But I remember the gentlelady from the 32nd, who I have the highest admiration for. For without her and her help directly to me and to my family, I couldn't share some things I'm going to share here in a second. But I remember talking to her about that bill, and I was conflicted with that bill because I thought, man, it doesn't do enough. I should vote no on this. This is not good. This is not the right policy. But it started to take steps to address recovery. It started to take steps to address the various things that we have to do to the, for the individual in the state of Washington. And we can talk about crime, we can talk about the things that are so important, and I'm glad to see them in this bill, because I think that that is a pathway, just like so many others, to help people. And if we don't do and take these steps, Madam Speaker, we're going to continue down the road that we are on today. And Madam Speaker, I can stand here, too, as one with lived experience. Madam Speaker, I spent years dealing with my son. I've shared it on the floor of this house. I talked about the devil that is heroin, and opioids, and the addiction, and how it rips through a family, and the sleepless nights, and all of the various things that I dealt with. But Madam Speaker, I can stand here today and tell you that hope is real. Recovery happens. Restoration exists. My son is doing phenomenal, Madam Speaker, three years. And Madam Speaker, if it wasn't for treatment, if it wasn't for recovery housing, if it wasn't for Suboxone and medicated treatment, he wouldn't be here, Madam Speaker, after so many times. Madam Speaker, I just got to spend vacation with him after session for the first time in 10 years, and I can't tell you what a blessing that was. And Madam Speaker, I share that today because I want this body to know that the steps that we're going to take in this bill, although the beginning steps will help other people live what I am living today. Because, Madam Speaker, if we do nothing, the problem continues. Madam Speaker, you heard already quoted some of the things this does around recovery, and the good gentleman behind me who said, "All the different things that are in there are part of their programs." But Madam Speaker, we are investing significant resources, significant dollars into recovery. Madam Speaker, the very, the $15 million used for housing vouchers, the $8 million, I believe it is, Madam Speaker, that will be used for recovery housing directly, is such a critical component, such a critical component. Because once we interact with these people, once we help them find that path into recovery, you have to have the backside. If we don't do that, the recidivism is huge. It just keeps going. Madam Speaker, this bill has many components in it that we've heard people agree with, and they disagree with. And Speaker, today, I feel that I agree with more than I disagree. And Speaker, I'll be voting yes today because I believe that we must take the steps necessary to right the ship. We must stop this epidemic in every way we can, every means possible, using law enforcement, using recovery, using medicated treatment, using whatever tool, whatever it takes. And this is a start. Madam Speaker, I don't think this is the last time we're going to talk about this on the floor of the House. I think that we will continue to build upon this, and we will do what we do as a body. We will recognize when we've done good policy, and we will praise that, and we will continue to build upon it. We will recognize when we've done policy that maybe didn't work out as well as we had intended, and we will work to fix it. Madam Speaker, I think today, the reason we are here, and history will show, that we are taking steps to get on the right path, to end this epidemic, to restore our cities, to restore families, to help individuals, and to restore our state from the scourge that is the opioid epidemic. I encourage a vote of yes today, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Rising today to urge a yes vote on this bill. Madam Speaker, you and I have spoke before about my work in the drug courts and in the mental health courts. Madam Speaker, if you haven't been to a drug court graduation, I would encourage you to go. It is such an opportunity to see people who have, are working hard, and I realize it's a continual struggle, but working hard to get past that first stage through the drug court, staying clean, staying sober. And Madam Speaker, that requires sometimes a little bit of accountability by a prosecutor. Maybe it's that extra few days of work crew because you're showing up late to your treatments. Maybe it's a few days in jail because you've used substances again, and you need to be, for the safety of the community, put in for a few days. But it requires a team approach. It requires a social worker, a defense attorney, a judge, a prosecutor, with the shared goal of getting those individuals clean and sober, Madam Speaker. And I urge a yes vote on this bill because I think this comes closer to striking the right balance between accountability in our communities, but also significant investments in treatment resources, so that we can get those folks permanently clean and sober, or at least surround them with the tools to continue on their path to sobriety. Madam Speaker, oftentimes, there's no perfect bill, and I suspect we're going to hear back from the court systems in about a year, that we need to make some tweaks to this. Well, that's okay. It's a big bill and a big topic. But let's do what we can today to make those investments, put the accountability in place for those folks who need it most, urging a yes vote on this bill. Thank you.
This bill is an improvement, but it's not enough. I'm voting no, and I'm asking you to vote no. Madam Speaker, when you consider this bill, this proposal, I would ask you to look at three things. The first is the State v. Blake decision from our state Supreme Court that got us to this place. In State v. Blake, our state's high court told us that it was the matter of scienter, of knowing, that was at issue in its consideration of our laws about the illegal possession and use of hard drugs. Now, the state Supreme Court told us, Madam Speaker, that it was that knowingness, knowingly, knowingly, knowing possession, that was the issue and the fault in our existing statute, and that if we repaired our existing law by inserting knowingly, or knowing, in the right spots, that the law as it stood would be constitutional. So, Madam Speaker, I believe the right response to the state Supreme Court's instruction and opinion and advice there was to do as they suggested. Instead, Madam Speaker, we have used their suggestion and their opinion about the constitutionality of our drug laws to open up our drug laws to a broad, wide, deep consideration of many issues. And Madam Speaker, I think that's why we have struggled to find the right Blake fix. We are adding more points in public policy than the state Supreme Court suggested. We are adding more points in public policy than the State Supreme Court suggested that we deal with in remedying the issues it raised in State v. Blake. So, Madam Speaker, we need to return our focus to that matter of knowingly. And I think the proper response would be to restore our drug laws as they were pre-Blake with the addition of knowingly as appropriate. The second spot, the second issue, the second group I would recommend that you consider when voting no on this bill, would be to talk to frontline law enforcement. My law enforcement and my part of the state has made it clear that our laws, our public policy strategies have been a failure because they have lacked clarity, they have lacked certainty, and they have lacked strength. What we need in our state to effectively combat this scourge of opioid use, of illegal opioid use, has been that lack of clarity. What we need is clear, strong language for everyone, Madam Speaker, not just for the user, not just for the frontline cop, but for everyone. Because, Madam Speaker, what we need to maintain a civil society are clear rules of engagement, rules of the road, clear laws, Madam Speaker. The third consideration I would ask you to make when you vote no is the experience of users, both former and current. I've spoken with both from my area, Madam Speaker. And what they tell me is this, that opioid addiction is a powerful thing and the only way to get through it, to get past it, to get over it, is for there to be powerful And, and, and that, Madam Speaker, is something we don't see, not just in this policy, not just in this proposal, but in our public policy in general about illegal drug use. I, I've spoken not just to recovering addicts, Madam Speaker, I've spoken to active users. And they have a, an interesting fatalism about what they're doing. They will acknowledge, the, the, the honest ones will acknowledge that they're slowly killing themselves, that this is a form of suicide. They know that. And yet, they don't feel it in their bones, broken or not, that what they're doing has consequences not only to themselves, Madam Speaker, but to others. To children, to teenage kids, to other adults in their communities. We need to reestablish their connection to the other people who live where they live and the consequences, as we've heard, of their actions. Madam Speaker, aside from, I believe, needing to make the consequence for illegal use and possession a Class C felony, as it was before the Blake decision, I'm also concerned in this proposal about the loose line on some of these new residences, housing arrangements, hubs, they're called in some of the sections, that in these places, children may be present. Now, we have improved some of that language from earlier versions of this proposal. Nevertheless, the language in this proposal still leaves open the possibility that a minor child may go into a living arrangement or even a temporary safe space and watch his or her parent or family member use illegally opioids. Madam Speaker, we have to draw the line on this. We have to make it that, that this often intergenerational problem of opioid addiction stops. We cannot enable that. We cannot empower that to continue. Madam Speaker, I am encouraged, in fact, by some of the users I've spoken with. They sometimes have the keenest and clearest understanding of what they're doing, not only that it will kill them, but what it will take to get away from that. And one of the things, one of the users told me is, you can't push a string. And, and, and I understand that that's a term often used in recovery. It's a good way to think of this issue. You can't push a string. And what this policy tries to do too much is push a string. Madam Speaker, people are moral creatures, they are intelligent creatures, they are thinking creatures. Even in their pain, even in their disassociation, they're still thinking and moral creatures. Ultimately, we need to encourage their agency so that they will make the best choices for themselves and the kids and the teenagers and their neighbors and everywhere they live. And we can do much better in that end than this policy will do. You can't push a string, Madam Speaker. You can only pull it through hell. And this policy doesn't do enough to create the clarity and strength and the language of our public policy so that we pull the string and get the people that we care about, that we love, that we want to get healthy through their hell and to a place where they can make better choices and live better lives. We've heard that we're going to be debating this issue going forward. Well, Madam Speaker, we need to do better now. We need to put this proposal aside and come up with a proposal that actually helps those most in pain, that does it with greater clarity, with greater precision and greater strength. We need to be strong in our convictions, we need to be compassionate toward those who are suffering, but we need to give them a clearly delineated path to a better life. This bill isn't clear enough, this proposal isn't strong enough, this proposal doesn't do enough. We need to do more, Madam Speaker. Please vote no and let's do better now.
I first want to thank yourself for your leadership through these negotiations and the many hours that you put in, as well as the good gentleman from the 20th, who brought his legal expertise to it, from the good gentleman from the 45th, who brought forward the sentencing guideline commission expertise we needed to figure out about where we should put this bill. And lastly, the good woman from the 30th district, who shared her heart and taught us that you have to be the voice of the, those who are addicted. She also shared about making sure that this bill was inclusive. And I'm very grateful for those across the other rotunda and the other side who also helped and put their heart and soul into this work. So, we're here today and I'm grateful for that. I think, Madam Speaker, that we made a mistake in that we, we thought that doing nothing or theoretically nothing would be okay. And what we heard from law enforcement repeatedly was, it's really difficult to go up to someone on the street who's suffering from addiction severely. I mean, we have Narcan vending machines. When I grew up, we had chocolate in them. And it's a different world, but to have to have them see somebody suffering an addiction needle in their arm sometimes and hand them a card to say, here, you should go to recovery, was not enough. And we would do that twice before we actually were able to take action and to react to their, their suffering and their crisis. I, I'm so happy that we're moving this forward today. And it's not perfect, Madam Speaker, as you know. There will be trailer bills, there will be work. And I love that there's data, as we've heard today, to make sure that the movement forward fixes anything that we might have missed. So, I was on the drive here, my father was kind enough to drive me back to the Capitol today, and we were talking about his Air Force service. And we were talking about how strict, and there were so many rules when he was serving. And I was thinking, why was that? Why do you see so much discipline and organization within the military? And it's because they were saving lives. You know, we could be at war and without that discipline and that, that accountability for our actions, the consequences, we heard that numerous times on the floor, then people could die. And he's grateful for that discipline. I wasn't as grateful growing up as a teenager, but I, I, I understand it now. And, Madam Speaker, those who are addicted are at war. They're, they're dying, they're, they're losing their families, their, their health is deteriorating, sometimes to a point that they can't go back and live a happy, healthy life again. And I, I find the nexus between the military rules and the rules that we have to set for those people who are under addiction, their mind is not working clearly, and we hand them a card? We can't do that. And so, I think in this bill, we're able to set the rules and we're able to say, hey, you have to make this decision, we're going to make it for you because under the state of addiction, you're not able to make it yourself. You're not capable of deciding what's good for you. We're asking them, should I go to jail, should I go to diversion and be treated, or should I just get high? And the drug, as you heard from people who were brave enough and strong enough to tell their story, the drug owns them. They're, they're not capable. So, we as legislators and families have to make that decision. I'm grateful that this bill has a gross misdemeanor. It also allows the statute of limitations to go long enough so that we can make sure that we get action and it doesn't get stuck in our court system. I also want to share that the good gentlewoman from the 32nd taught me something this legislative session. She was kind enough to go to lunch and I asked her, I said, so explain drug addiction to me, explain what we need to do, what, what can we do to make this better? And, and our lunch, the biggest takeaway was that she said, the most heartbreaking moments when you talk to someone who's addicted and you ask them why you're using. You've lost your family, you, you, you're losing so many things in life, why? And she told me that they've answered often that they're not worthy of recovery. And I think, I mean, that sticks with me and that drives me to do this passion and go through negotiations and make this right. So, I'm grateful this bill is here for us to make it right. There should be no shame. I also learned from the gentlelady from the 30th, that we can't stigmatize people with addiction, it only harms them more. And we all have a chance every day to begin again. One of my favorite lines is, today is the first day of the rest of your life. And I feel like that should be in every recovery center. And it's okay to fail. We fail on the floor, I fail on the floor. I learn something new every day. But we get back up and we try it again and we have a new day and a new chance and we have hope. I think that's really important. And then, I think lastly, President Roosevelt, he said, if you believe, then you're halfway there. And I think, Madam Speaker, we have to believe for some people that we are privileged and honored to serve. We have to believe for our family members when they don't believe. And so, for that reason, I simply ask you to understand this bill isn't perfect and we're going to make it perfect. We're going to keep driving forward and trying to teach those people who are addicted that you do matter, your life matters and you are worth 100% of getting better. And if you fail that day, we're going to help you, we're going to believe in you the next day. So, thank you for being here, thank you, all, all, everyone who's in this room for being here and for making this right. And I ask you to believe for those who don't believe anymore with me today and vote yes.